Five, I'm gonna bring the May fourteenth, twenty twenty meeting to order. I'll approve select and present town administrative president. Leo Martell is video taken for the public, thank you Leo. Linda Nickerson will post those so that people can see the meeting. Like to bring the whole business to order, would you be in the meeting minutes from April thirtieth? Do you have a motion on those?
I'll make a motion to approve the April thirtieth, twenty twenty meeting. They'll have it meeting minutes.
Here's your.
That's ready.
Second. Any discussion? All I wanna say is these things were done very well. Everything was written correctly as far as I could tell, and the order was correct, and very good job. And motions been made second, all in favor?
Aye.
If you want to just start a pile by. Next thing, I guess I'll open it up for public comment.
We might know. Recently, I found out I was in the need of some angler. And my wife Gail said to me, why don't you call us if they got all that angler and they wanna get rid of it? I said, well, I don't think I should get involved, you know. Plus, I needed it soon, like the next day. So anyways, the thought came to my mind, you know, how the cemetery trustees made money on those old signs and that piece of grant? Maybe the town could sell that angler.
We could try.
Well, that's what somebody wants.
Cause there's a lot that's still in the library.
Yeah, which we're gonna get out, which isn't a huge amount, but the rest is done.
You gotta file it for the.
It's full of holes, you think there's much value to it, Leo?
Oh, yeah, somebody can use that, I'm telling you.
Okay. Maybe we'll.
Well, you have how much money you want from stealing? Five thousand, okay, that includes.
That really, yeah.
I understand that, so, you know, the town could get some money back out of that.
Yeah, I would imagine it's close to a thousand dollars worth of stealing.
I would some on the stage and you got some up above. And again, all the people that do work with welding and all that stuff, I'm sure somebody would buy it from the town. You know, especially if it's a reasonable price, you know, just.
I wonder how we advertise it, five pound or what?
I'd say we could take pictures of it and estimate how the weight of it, how much we want, not just the number.
Well, you might just give a script, take a picture of it and give a description, reach description. And tell them where it's located, they can come look at it.
Right.
You know?
Yeah.
Because, as I said, I'm sure that I had a lot of it in my house a few years ago when I was cleaning it up. In my neighborhood, every piece of it.
And I know it's not worth much by the ton right now.
Although, right, that's why I said it's worth more, you know, it's smart, it's smart. It's worth more as a product, really, so we can use it, you know?
Okay, we'll look at it, cause, you know, one thing's on our agenda tonight is that building, so that's gonna have to be taken care of soon anyway.
Yeah, great, exactly, okay.
Anything else, Leo? Okay, yeah, I think we can address that.
I don't know.
You do?
You know, I'd almost give an incentive to the department if the highway department wanted to facilitate that. I would let the money go back to the highway department for their department to use as appropriate. It just isn't incentive, I mean, it's hard to dirt department, I mean, it's not really the highway department per se, but it's in their storage area. And so if they wanted to facilitate that, just something that's just something I'm thinking about, you know?
Yeah.
So, something you wanna talk to the road agent about?
We could ask him tonight, I don't know if he's gonna wanna do much with it, but I don't think there's gonna be a large dollar amount of money there irregardless.
He's gonna have to be at least aware of it, people coming down this area.
Okay, Mike, there's a couple of donations here.
I can start if you'd like.
I'd like to start on those donations and I'd like to have a discussion on them as we go to them, so why don't you start with the first one?
Okay, well, we have a thousand dollars from the Golden Morris School Advisors Council to the welfare department. I just wanted to note, were there any restrictions on that thousand dollars?
Mike, let's.
There is a potential.
Let's first do the RSA.
Okay.
And then we'll talk about it.
Okay.
If we can.
Well, I make the motion then for RSA thirty-one colon ninety-five dash B, Roman numeral three, subpar paragraph B, to accept the donation from Golden Memorial School Student Council Advisors for one thousand dollars to the welfare department. Motion on the table.
Well, did you wanna second this motion on the hall of discussion?
Yeah.
Okay, motions were made and seconded. Let's start a discussion about where in the town we'd like that money to go. We have a couple of options, I could go to the welfare department, we can designate it to the church's food pantry. Or we can leave it in our general fund, if we don't set something up at the end of the year, this would go back to our general fund. But it was the volunteers at the Golden Morris School doing this and their student council sent it. If we can, I'd like to get it back to the public as soon as possible, as I think that was probably part of their, you know, wanting it to go to welfare. They wanted to go to help people, and I think in my, in my aspect, that church food pantry is one of our closest related things to townspeople. I'd like to hear from you guys.
Yeah, well, I don't know what kind of situation that Jeanie's running into with welfare. I mean, we have a thousand dollar donation, that could help someone with their electric bill or whatever, and she'd be better able to do that. You know, I mean, you're gonna put it in the food pantry, they're either gonna get some gifts, some biggets, or some food to stock their shelves. But there might be a more, I guess, more.
Pressing need.
What's that?
Pressing need.
Right, within the welfare department for someone that has a bill, phone bill or whatever, you know?
I know at our last meeting, we checked with her and she hadn't had any increase, Lee, do you know if there's any increase in?
I'm not aware of it, but her phone volume is down on her, and she checks in regularly, so I have to check in with her to see.
What's your thought, Mike?
I think is we could keep it for the short term in like a reserve, because things, things, you know, a lot of money's coming in. But in July, the extra six hundred dollars that people are getting for money as far as unemployment is gonna go away, unless you do something.
July thirty first.
So, maybe the latter part of the year may be a little more difficult, so it may be worthwhile just keeping in, in a, shall we say, in a holding pattern. Then at the end of the year, if we need to give more money to like food baskets or something like that, that's a different story, but at least we have some money that can be executed during the year. What, what do you think, agree?
Yeah, you know, like I say, I think she may run into someone that has some kind of a glitch. You have to remember too, if some, after, if they have the stay sheltered, stay sheltered, and you remove that at the end of May, if you don't go to work, you don't have a job.
Right.
And you can't collect.
Right.
So, I mean, you know, someone could get caught in that where they're afraid to go to work and they end up with no job and no money.
Okay. So. I would just like to keep it closed, because, you know, it was a donation from the student council there. And I would like it to go to some welfare related thing, whether it be the food pantry or that.
And I think we could do that in the fall anyhow, when they start to get the pressing need for that type of thing.
I was thinking that's gonna get worse. Can we send a thank you note to both schools, student council?
Yep.
I think that'd be appropriate, you can do draft with them.
Yeah.
I think it was nice of them to include our town, they did have that will make sale on our.
Yeah, we're.
That's a, that's a serious amount of money, I think, so it was nice to do that. Okay, there's one more.
Those are motions, right?
Fine, yeah, the motion's been made second, all in favor of that, accepting that thousand dollars?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, going to the next one, Mike.
Okay, for RSA thirty-one colon ninety-five dash B, subpar paragraph, Roman numeral power three, subpar paragraph B, to accept unanticipated revenue amount of one thousand four hundred fifty-six dollars in forceance from court restitution.
This one here.
You're gonna need second first.
Second. Well, second, this one here is a check we got back for restitution of damages that we've done to a cruiser from a person that they were speaking with. And this money came back to us, it was not part of our insurance funds. The chief has asked in the letter that this go back into his vehicle maintenance account. And I'd like to discuss that now and see what everybody thinks on that.
He discussed it with me also, and the thing is, I had really no problem with it, it's not too much money, and the thing is, he holds a tight budget to put it towards his vehicle maintenance, not salaries. It's vehicle maintenance, it's to repair equipment, I'd say that would be fine.
Sure. And now, what do you guys think about leaving, I haven't seen the vehicle, what about leaving our vehicle damaged? It looks like a damage is probably minor, but we are leaving whatever vehicle this was damaged.
Is that the vehicle we've been losing for the?
No, I believe it's a new vehicle.
Oh, it's a new one?
Yeah, and one that they responded to a.
Says D two, I don't know what that means.
Trisopiooid crisis on Tucker Hill and the individual.
Oh, okay, yeah.
And damaged the roof.
The question is, is it worthwhile fixing the damage to the car at this point? The chief has ascertained, has confirmed it has not been fixed yet.
It's a twenty seventeen Ford police intercept. Mileage in was eleven. I can't believe it's like eleven miles on it, so.
Can we leave it for the chief's discretion as to?
Someone can ask. Whether he's used to repair this vehicle or something.
Right.
Okay, so the motion's been made second to accept the fourteen hundred fifty-six dollars and four cents. And all in favor?
Aye.
And we'll leave it up to the chief's discussion and let him put it in his vehicle maintenance account, whether he fixes his vehicle or not. Okay, next thing on the agenda is gonna be the review of the road agents' road projects for twenty twenty. That starts at seven fifteen.
Seven sixteen.
Seven sixteen, so we're good to go with you, Jeff.
All right, my turn.
Just for the public's notice, we discussed this in our prior meeting, and this was a meeting that is set up as a public hearing on those road issues. And Jeff is gonna discuss those now, if you think.
Well, maybe go over from the beginning like we did last time.
I think you see help, do you have a list? Okay.
I didn't know if you got any feedback or anything.
We have no calls on it.
Okay. So, I'll just review it again, and we'll come there. As I had talked about before, our like large project would be Ray Road, that would be reclaiming the asphalt, add gravel, repaving, repair some drainage issues. Holmes Road would be to rebuild the intersection or meet through thirteen. I did get one call on that from Stan Soul, he called me personally, and he wanted to know if he needed to come to the meeting or even to advocate for it. And I told him he did not, he has concerns about coming out of public the meeting.
Okay.
So, he was.
So, he was happy that you were.
Yep, he was happy, he was, he was vote of confidence.
Yeah.
And so that's the only input I had on that from him, and that's what he said, he wasn't gonna come to the meeting.
And he seen that through public notice or from watching?
I don't know, to be honest, I never thought of asking him, probably.
Are you wearing on the whole baby?
He was just wondering.
How we were seeing this. Yeah, I didn't even think of asking, to be honest with you.
Okay.
He's got my number, so he just called. Old Ford Estates, we're gonna do a similar thing there, we gotta, where the intersection of Route seventy-seven and Old Ford Estates Road come together. It's all broken up, falling apart, we gotta tear it up, add some new base gravel. We're gonna widen it just a little bit, repave the area, cause there's a traffic island in the middle of that road as divider, it's pretty substantial. And the neighbors, through their association, whatever, maintain it, keep it in excellent shape and all that, there's a planter as well as a side of it. But what it's doing, it forces all the additional traffic out to the edges of the road and it breaks the sides of the asphalt up and stuff, so we gotta reconfigure that. And also, it's not unknown, the traffic through the store also does that because it's a rear interest to the store. When back when that road was conceived, it has a seventy-five foot town right away, which is larger than normal because they anticipated some sort of extra traffic or whatever there, so it was. Not anything dramatic, I'm talking a couple of feet on each side.
Yeah.
Enhance it. Uh, then Alexander Road, we got some drainage improvements we have to do there, Puckney Road, some same type of things, some drainage improvements. Guy Hill, we had a subdivision done up there, and the gentleman, through the planning process, was required to cut some trees in kind of a pinch point we have there, so we're gonna remove the stumps and widen road out a couple of sections right through there. We also have some exaction money that we've collected of a couple lots up there to go through and improve that road, so we're gonna look on that.
Yeah.
Uh, that does it for, you know, and then again, any failover that comes along or something like that, you know? And this is subject to two different things, one being the financial end of it, as long as everything stays equal with the financial end of it at tax level. And also, any other unforeseen circumstances like weather, if we have a disastrous storm and it causes some problems, we may have to revisit it. For all that's the purpose of this, what we do. And then routine maintenance throughout the town, as always, shoulder ditch work, brush cutting, roadside mowing, patching the asphalt, and again.
And I think you said you was gonna do maybe some shoulder work down on Montalona.
Yeah, in different areas, you know.
Where it was paved last year and whatnot, right?
And it's just places where it needs some attention.
Yeah.
And that's kind of random throughout the town.
A couple of spots, right after Wayne's house, the road was pretty rough down in that hollow down there now, down Montalona.
Oh, yes.
I know you said.
Just after the turn.
Yeah, at your last meeting, you said that you were gonna get to some of that stuff next year.
I mean, the deal is, is the dollars, it's all about the dollars. I thought you did a great job on Montalona last year. Well, we, that was one of the things about changing gears, due to the harsh winter and the type of winter we had, the road really deteriorated. That had a base underneath it, so we jumped around, changed our file a bit, and repaved a couple of large sections of that. That's kind of what we're doing, unfortunately, we're seem to be jumping around, putting fires out.
You'll continue to do that as needed, if it happens?
Yes, yes, and again, I mean, we really have a visit, perhaps getting a bond and doing some extensive paving. We've got a number of roads that are all about the same condition that need to be kind of overlaid paving.
You know, maybe one year we'll be lucky enough to consider that with all of these things that are going on.
Yeah, I, I don't think it would be nice to think that, where I thought, I mean, we have some catching up to the way we've done it, but I think we gotta seriously look at that. I mean, you've indicated yourself about Morse Road, now you're talking about this section on Montalona Road, it's all fine, but it's all a waste of dollars. It's incredible amount of money.
I would like to, I know once you leave that end of town, you've got that side starting to get pretty well caught up. Make sure that we can look at the through roads, the ones that people use for full travel.
Yeah, we always do that.
Yeah, because I think that's an important thing, because there's a lot more traffic on those through roads.
But at the same time, the rule of thumb is you can't let your good roads fall apart.
Right.
We have a bunch of subdivisions that the roads are getting gated now, and they need, they were built to standards of the town and whatever they were built, you know, in the eighties, nineties and so forth. And they need some maintenance, for years we didn't, had to do very little maintenance, we just plowed them, molded the road, molded the sides of the road, very little maintenance. But now it's coming to the point where we gotta really look at it and put an overlay of paving on.
Yeah.
And to protect what's there before it totally falls apart, I mean, there's gonna be no end to it.
Have you had any public input since our last meeting?
No, other than Stan Soul, Stan Soul.
Okay.
Guys to that, he has a vested interest in Holmes Road, he lives on that, that road is.
Yeah. Okay, anybody else have any questions for Jeff from the public?
We might, Jeff, I just wanted to mention, a few years back, you had to repair or do some work on Tenny Hill where the power lines are. On the left-hand side, on the southern side, I should say rather, the, the water was coming down, mud was flowing all the way down.
Yep.
To the, to the swamps, out back in the store. And now we're starting to do that again, because of the bikes going up there all the time?
Yeah.
I don't know if that's something that you can repair.
Well, the last time that occurred, you were well aware of it, because you were involved in it, and I can't remember the name of the utility company that owns National Grid.
Yeah.
They came in, they rebuilt it, they put water barriers in, they spent an extensive amount of money on it, but it's being worn away with the dirt and bike traffic and all that, I mean. It's an issue, rightfully so, but it's kind of their responsibility, we don't really get up into the power lines.
Something you, maybe the mud is getting down in there and the water broke.
To do what?
Slow that down, you know?
Well, it comes all the way from the top of the hill.
I know, I know, I agree with you, that's why you bring.
I mean, I, I don't. Yeah, I mean, we, we could do it, but I don't think it's fair to the town that spends town tax money on fixing the right of way of the public service.
So, I guess then it, I guess where it comes down, cause if someone were to contact National Grid and make them aware of the problem.
I mean, I don't.
You gotta shut down that, 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 all along from the bikes, and they're gonna be happy about that.
No, I'm supposed to be using it anyway, the big sign right there says no bikes.
They do all the time, you know that.
I, I know, but there's a big, so the sign is there, I, I, I mean.
Lee, why don't you make a note, and what I'll do is I'll try calling that officer at National Grid.
You would think that they would be aware of it because they've been doing ongoing work to power lines, all different levels.
Flying all the way.
Yeah, from, you know, overhead maintenance, on the ground tree cutting, pole replacement thing, so you would think.
Looking, too.
Yeah, but I would think that.
I think that they've been pretty receptive when somebody does call them, and they, they're easy enough to put stuff off when nobody called.
Yeah, that's what I mean, you know, that's why I was saying, you know, if you're, under your authority, then.
Yeah, well, yeah.
National Grid, then somebody should be in touch with that, National Grid.
I don't mind calling, we have the number.
They can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's how about, it's not a tax money on that.
Right, I guess, again, I was just bringing it up to see how we can, if we can resolve it, you know, because again.
You should be able to put some riprap to slow it.
Anytime I walk down, down that road, the drive down there, after rain, I always see there's a huge mud puddle there. And all the washing down down into the block, and you can see it's coming down in the bike track trail, you know? So, it's, I don't believe it.
It's life.
Yeah.
The riprap, if you put that there, they wouldn't, bikes would have misery like that, but that's life, they're trespassing anyways.
To back up at this event of Leo's talk about a lever dam or something like go up on the top of the hill. And washed down the roadway, and it did a severe amount of erosion, washed down in the block, and like he said, continued down behind his house in the Route thirteen.
Route thirteen and all there.
You know, it was pretty salty material, it was turbulent, and.
National Grid came in.
Yeah, they came in and they, they put logs in the roadway and built it up with gravel and regrade it, they, they made it, they did it a really good, honest effort, they didn't.
Oh, great, yeah.
But now it needs some maintenance.
Yeah, I think it'd be fair to just go get in the queue with them.
Yeah, and I believe that's, National Grid is the one to, I believe is the one that controls that.
Okay, we'll contact them, we have their number, they do the, when they do the.
We, we have kind of pushed the material up in the bottom, just on the edge of the road, but we haven't gone up the road or anything to do that, I mean. And that, that doesn't really, doesn't compensate, because it is a stop in the water source, it's the end result of it.
Yeah, no, I agree, I agree, like you said, when they do the trash, it's first, it was great.
Yeah.
And it just really started in the last couple of years, and it's gotten worse now, and at this point, but it comes from the bikes and the four-wheelers going up and down.
Anybody else from the public have anything else to say about the roads? You guys like your roads? All right.
William?
We're hungry.
On the mail.
Well, do you have anything you wanna add for Jeff?
No, no, I didn't to listen to that, this program before and.
Yeah. Thanks for coming in tonight, we have, Lee has something.
We know earlier about the steel.
Oh, yeah.
Iron.
We're talking about, yeah, we have a couple of things, and we've tried to hide them for you, but.
Me?
They're not to do with your roads, it's to do with selling the steel loss, we believe, so the town could benefit from the steel in your guy.
So, we're all set with this?
We're all set with it.
I just wanna close one thing.
This is all set, public notice, close the line of the system, yeah?
Dollars are the key here, you know, I mean, it's, repaving costs money.
That's right.
You know?
All right, road issue is done.
Okay.
Closing the public hearing on that, roads. Jeff, you have steel stored there, we have a little bit more upstairs on the second floor and third floor of the town hall.
Yeah.
Leo suggested that we maybe put that in one clump and take a picture of it and see if anybody's willing to purchase it to go back to the town general funds. And Mike said if you facilitated and maybe looking at it and sizing it up, we could put it towards the, you know, paving bucket. For two feet, we were talking, you know, a very small amount of steel there as far as raw value goes, but it's better than nothing, I don't think the recycling of it's worth much.
You know what it is?
Yeah.
It's angle iron with brackets all put on the end with a series of holes.
Lot of holes.
Oh. Like an engine part, all one of those things, someone might be interested in.
Yeah, so I think what I was trying to do.
We'd be lucky if we got somebody to take it away for free, to be honest with you.
Much better.
Yeah, they, they make a lot of money getting rid of the old cemetery signs.
Yeah.
You know?
But they had historic.
So, as you just said, if, if you get somebody to take it away, number one, that's, that's a bet, if you get a little money out of it. And somebody who does steel work to, somebody around their house, you know, cut up the steel, welding and stuff like that.
It can hurt a truck.
You'd say, fine.
That's fine, or we can just put it in Woody's dumpster and he can take it to the dump.
Well, the other thing too is if, if schools were up and functioning right now, I'm sure they're welding and metal shops would love to have a load of fresh steel too, but those aren't running great counts, so.
That's fine.
So, some we're gonna look at, we just wanna let you know.
We got it in a pile in the.
Correct, when we, we visit, when all of the steel is moved from the library down to one pile.
Yes.
We're gonna move it from there down.
No, no, they think of the. Same, you just keep it going, get it in the back of the truck and just keep going.
Just in case you wanted to leave Jeff in behind or anything.
Yeah, sure.
Lee wanted me to touch on with you, we're gonna bring it up in our general mailbox later, but it was to do with the traffic sign up here.
Oh, yeah.
Right now, we have that, so it's movable in like five different spots within town, and there was some talk from Chris Ramelad about possibly making that one a permanent sign, which would have a small solar panel. When that becomes a permanent sign, we have to get into a maintenance agreement with the state for having that as a permanent sign on the road. Do you have any issues with that at all, being where the town?
Non-interested in the highway department maintaining.
Okay.
Long sign is posted, it become, yeah, it becomes a electronic device.
Yeah.
With solar panel array to heat it.
Yeah.
Operating on heat and operate it, and that's beyond our capabilities.
Okay.
The other thing to think about is, what about the winter months? I think that's gonna be, could get hit by a snowplow very easily.
That's what I was thinking.
And the road slime where they plow the roads, because that sign is right on the side of the road, and the state plows the road, they're responsible for plowing it. I mean, things get in, and it has quite a bit of force, it's in the elements, the salt and all that, so I mean, I don't, I understand the solar power, they, they have a lot of signs along the state interstates that are done that way, but usually this setback quite a ways.
I think they charge that one every two weeks or so, it's not that bad, they move it from location.
Yeah, I just, that, that, I mean, I'm not saying it's a bad idea, that would be something that I'd ask. Basically, if it becomes permanent, and then it does get, the potential damage is there. And there's, there's obviously a reason why the state doesn't wanna take responsibility for it.
Right.
You know, and ownership, like I said, if it was just the post and the sign.
Again, that's gonna be further on our agenda, I just wanna bring it up while you're here.
Jeff, you wanted to head out, but I, when I asked the question about the salt from the road and all of that.
Okay.
Exactly.
I think we're done with you, if you have anything further from the Scott.
I just wanna see if it's gonna bring the Windex up to clean it or whatever.
You're good, Jeff, that's everybody, I have an agenda for you.
Can you say a little louder?
Anything we have?
No, you said you're good?
No, I didn't say that.
Yeah, I thought you said.
Can you repeat that a little?
Good to go. All right, thank you for attending me.
Thank you, Jeff.
We'll see you, thank you.
Okay, going back to the agenda.
I did have him on to seven forty-five, I sent him an email asking him to get here a little early. I had you for a day, a month, a year.
Right now.
Oh, he is?
Yeah, so the next thing on the agenda would be the town hall renovation bid, and we will wait for Jeff to come in on that. It was on the agenda at seven forty-five, and I think that it's close enough to that that our discussion will not end before that, so anybody from the public that wants to come in. Come right in, Jeff, we're gonna try and have you a little early since we just wrapped up Jeff Crosby. Jeff Trexler is here to discuss the town hall renovation bids that we received this week on the town hall renovation. Jeff Trexler is here to discuss the town hall renovation bids that we received, um, this week on the town hall renovations for the second floor ceiling and roof structure.
Um, we've received two bids, uh, both from, um, very competent contractors. Uh, the contractors have been in business, one of them twenty-two years, one twenty-seven years, something like that. Um, they've been around for quite a while. Quite a difference in the price.
I saw that.
Um, which is kind of surprising. You like to see prices fairly tight, but you know, people read these, um, read the documents.
We have the bid scale. Would you guys like to look at the bids while I'm, I've already read my, the bids complete, so.
The, uh, one bid from Mark Carrier Construction from Manchester was at sixty thousand, seven hundred and four dollars. The other bid from Coniston Construction from Guilford, their price was thirty-four thousand, five hundred and sixty-one dollars, which sounds like a very good price. Um, I contacted Bryant Lair, the vice president of Coniston Construction, uh, today. And, um, let him know that he was an apparent little bidder at this point. And reviewed with him his, uh, clarifications on the second page of his bid proposal form down at the bottom. Clarifications to bid. First one is, the proposed bid excludes any hazardous waste removal. And by the way, there's a similar exclusion on the Mark Carrier Construction bid for hazardous waste removal. Um, and, uh, because we haven't identified whether there's any there or not, there, there's no way for them to price it. So they basically say our bid doesn't include it. Um, if it's required, that would be an additional charge.
Suspicious of something like that, incorrect.
Yeah. Um, and, um, let's see, the other one was, uh, the bid excludes any plumbing, mechanical or electrical work. Um, both Bryant and myself don't anticipate that we're gonna run into any. We think we're working around all of the existing utilities. But you never know, you know, buckle wall, if there might be something in the way, a wire or whatever, they have to bring an electrician in. It would be an additional charge for that because that's an unknown factor at this point. Um, and the second one, special inspections, that's, uh, done by me. There's no cost to the contractor for, um, for doing those inspections. Um, I, uh, sent a message off to Clint Madden, uh, the Town Restoration Committee.
Which Lean did C C S M on that.
Great, uh, yesterday, uh, asking if they had done any environmental or hazardous material testing back in two thousand and eleven, twelve? When they were originally proposing, uh, the renovations, and they did. Uh, R P F Environmental did a full, um, hazardous material assessment at that time. Uh, the results were they found no asbestos anywhere in the building. Any of the plaster or mastic or tile or any of the other regular stuff that they checked, which is good. Um, they didn't detect any. And as far as lead paint, which is the only other thing that we may have an issue on, um, it's a very small quantity. Uh, so I don't know if this is on, um, the general page here. It's a table, uh, lead paint testing table. Uh, that comes after the asbestos table near the back of their report. And they do have the item nine-nine-seven where they tested the wall, plaster, the component was the wall, the substrate was the plaster, the color was tan. We should put that meeting room as the tan. And they've got point zero one, um, milligrams per centimeter, which is very, very low. Um, I think the federal government gets involved, excuse me, state government gets involved if you're at point one zero. Or maybe it's one point zero, I forget what it is, but it's, it's quite a bit more than this level. They, from what I understand, the federal government has no limit on lead paint. If you have lead paint, you gotta deal with their rules. I don't know what the rules are. I'm not an expert in this. Um, I did talk with Bryant Lair at C C I, um, Coniston Construction about this. And he said he'd do some research on it. He didn't think it would be an issue. Um, and they just, they may have to get a certified person to actually remove it and throw it away and dispose of it properly.
That'd be an additional expense?
It would be an additional expense. It's not like we have to, I don't think it's like we have to bring in an abatement company.
Great.
Plastic off the whole area, you know, and do the, the full abatement and so on. Um, they're very localized areas that we're dealing in. Uh, that's where we're putting those brackets in underneath. Um, and so that's an issue that we'll deal with. Um, I, I, I told Bryant that we would send him this report. And based on, uh, his review, that he'll get back to us and let us know what we need to do. He's, he's the expert on the construction side, more than I am. Um, so my recommendation to the board of selectmen is to accept the bid proposal from Coniston Construction. An amount of thirty-four thousand, five hundred and sixty-one dollars, um, in accordance with their proposal.
Okay. I appreciate your review, Jeff. Um, I'm gonna give you a little bit of further information on here that Lean provided me with. I just want to let you know that we had taken a bid from Score Construction for twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and ninety-six dollars in prior years to try and get that work done.
I'm sorry, the bid from?
Score, Score Construction, the original person that was gonna do the work up there on the second floor.
And they were twenty-nine?
They were twenty-nine. And just for background information, uh, that contractor filed a shut down letter, I believe, and could not finish the project. Um, the next bidder was sixty-five, nine, seven, five at that time and Con Hill was one oh nine, one hundred. If we accept this bid from Coniston Construction, we will still be under the second bidder on that project. Uh, using the combined values of both of these companies. So that's kind of good news. Because had they gone with the second higher bidder, um, in the first place, we still would have matched that dollar value. So, that's kind of good to see. Um, and again, we have that letter that Jeff has, and there also was a letter earlier sent through that, uh, if the project wasn't over a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, we had no payment bond required. We all get that notice by email as well. So, we, I think some good news on this and, um, I'd like to follow through with Jeff's recommendations. I'd like to open it up to the other two selectmen to see what their ideas were and then open it up to the public to see if anybody has any comments.
Well, I, I think when you're, you're looking at what Score was intending to do and what Jeff has, uh, proposed for them to do, there's a big difference in, in the two proposals, you know? Uh, number one is, they had a lot of penetrations in those things, which, I, I mean, unless you're a dry waller, there's no way you're putting those in, yeah, quick, you know? We're taking time and it was concerning. And I think with Score Construction, yeah, and I had a concern. And it was a low number at the time, and I don't know, but yes, I think the estimator, because the estimated, estimated the job. A week later it was gone. We went through, how many supervisors that came out there?
Oh, five, I think.
You know, so I mean, I think somebody may have been, uh, a little upset with the job they had. And they, when they left, they-
Left a sign.
Left the signs, all council company probably, you know? But, in the end, we ended up, you know, going to task and we got all that steel and nothing to do with it.
Right. Your thoughts, Lee? Well, um, established company, yes, Jeff?
Definitely.
Both of them?
Um, so my experience, I have worked with Coniston Construction, C C I is how they're known in the industry. Um, on a number of projects, um, I have not worked for them. But they have constructed projects that I've designed and been a member of the design team.
Okay.
Um, and they've always done great work. I've been very happy with them. They're one of the, the people I enjoy working with because they do a good job.
Okay, thank you. But I, I needed to hear that from them again. Because, you know, Score Construction, uh, from what I understand, they had good references and stuff and we still got burnt at the end. And so sometimes, you know, this company's been around for a while and, um-
Yeah, and, and they've been under, you know, the same leadership for quite a long time. It's not like new guys in here. Um, and, um, when I spoke with, uh, Bryant Lair, the vice president, um, he said that they intend to do this with their own forces, their own people.
Did they do, come up for your site meeting?
Yes, they were here for the site meeting, both, both.
So he has, he's got a concept of exactly what's going on.
Um, and he asked really good questions at the site meeting. He had studied the drawings in advance. He came up there, you know, looking and he asked some very good questions. Um, it's not like, oh, this is my first time looking at this. I mean, yeah. Um, so they're, uh, I think because they're using their own people is why they're less expensive than Mark Carrier. Mark Carrier Construction may be selling out a lot of that work.
Okay.
Um, and, uh, and then you're at the mercy of the prices you get from your sales.
I just, I'm satisfied. Anybody from the public have any comment on this?
I just wanted to, you know, have any idea of this.
Um, I think they're gonna get going right away. If the, if the selectmen, um, approve or accept this proposal, I would recommend issuing a letter of intent promptly, um, which puts them on notice that the contract is gonna be awarded. They're responsible for preparing the contract and getting in, into us, but they can start ordering materials and, and we'll probably schedule a pre-construction meeting. Maybe it'll be a virtual meeting. I don't know if we have to meet here or not. We could do it digitally.
Was there any discussion on a steel that's existing up here?
Uh, part of the scope of work is to bring all that steel that's up there down to the ground so that-
Okay.
I'm, I'm sure they'll put it in the back of your truck.
Yeah, we just talked about bringing it down to Jeff's and, uh, having somebody try and purchase that maybe if you wanted it.
Yeah, right.
You know, we had to a school, there's not much we can do with it.
We got a special deal for you.
Yeah.
I myself am especially thankful for this design, Jeff. I did not like the penetrations, the quantity in those old timbers. I felt that that many penetrations in a dry older timber was just gonna cause splits and cracks to a timber that's been functioning for over a hundred years. So, this design to me is hands down far superior and I'm very happy with it. Lean had made us a quick proposal sheet here if we wanted to use it. And, uh, I think I'll do it to Mike to read, but it's my recommendation that we accept this bid from Bryant Lair for the C C I Construction. This doc, I was gonna tell, uh, thank you for the hard work you did here. We, the town greatly appreciates.
I think it's a better solution. I agree with you. Hogging out material out of those old timbers to run tests through is, um, we, we prefer to use quills.
Yeah.
Rather than big, you know, steam fasteners.
So this is a proposal, uh, we're going to Coniston, the construction company. The town, Mr. Lair, the town Dunbar, through its four selectmen, is to accept your bid for the proposal for construction of the subject, of the subject project in the amount of thirty-four thousand, five hundred and sixty-one dollars. This letter will serve as notification of the town's intent to enter into a construction contract for this work and the terms of the bid document and your bid proposal. In accordance with the instructions to the bidders, please execute and deliver two copies of the construction contract using A I A, A one oh one or A one oh five for our review and approval. A digital draft of the contract should be submitted in advance highlighting the proposed changes or additions to the standard contract limits to ensure that the contract alterations are mutually agreeable. We're excited that the construction process has now begun and look forward for a successful and timely completion of the work. Thank you for your proposal and congratulations on your selection. Regards, David Knowl, chairman, Robert Montell, selectman, Michael Consis. Motion's been made.
Certainly.
And seconded. Um, now for discussion. Jeff, I have reviewed the A I A, A one oh one and A one oh five, um, contracts. And I believe one oh one had a better breakdown of their insurances showing the builder's risk, the general liability and the workman's compensation. Can you double check that and work with them on the one that gives us the best, um, packages? One of those two had a better description of the insurances and I can't remember. I believe it was one oh one though. I even, I was reading it at the extent a couple of weeks ago.
I, I don't recall. I remember one of them's supposed to be a short form, but the short form's actually longer than the long.
Yeah. And I think the short form actually had a better breakdown of builder's risk and liability and workman's compensation. Where the other one kind of grouped it up and I didn't like that way out.
Okay.
So if you can work on that. Um, motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I really appreciate what you've done, Jeff. I kept stressing it. I thought a timber frame engineer would do a lot better than it. And, and I think that would be, I think, for us the best solution.
I appreciate it. Will one of the selectmen be sort of a, a contact person? Who should I?
I guess I could, I could.
Okay.
You know, I'm kind of free in the middle of the day. If you just call me, I could come up and meet you.
If we schedule a pre-construction conference?
Yeah.
Would you like to be involved?
Yeah. I, I could recommend that the library be involved too.
Okay.
I just, so she's, she's perfectly aware of what's, what the schedule's gonna be like. I did speak with her today and being closed, um, she's loving to have this done now at this point, so.
Um, eventually, um, well, you'll have to decide whether you give them a key. Um, to the door and I would anticipate that, these are things we work out in the pre-construction conference. I would anticipate that they would use the front door at all times, the, the Route thirteen side, not be going through the library. We do have to make sure that the toilets are accessible to them during the workday.
Yeah.
Down the north side. Um, and, and we talk about access. Do you wanna, you know, do you wanna let them have a key and come and go as they please? Or stop in to see Lean every time they want to get into the building or, you'll have to work that out.
Yeah, I think we'll work that out at a later point because sometimes depending on her agenda here Thursday night, she gets to come in later.
Right.
So, um, whether it's Donna here with more regular hours, we'll work that out.
Okay.
And find out a way to do that properly. Uh, would you like a copy of this to bring, so you can address it with them?
Um, it, did, can you email it? Thank you.
Can you email it?
That would be fun.
So we'll scan it and email it to you.
Yeah, and then, um, I'll talk to them tomorrow about sending up this pre, uh, pre-construction conference.
I was a little worried once we sent it out that we weren't actually, in this time of people being really busy and this COVID, that we weren't gonna get acceptable bids on this. And I'm so glad that we did.
Yeah, we, uh, there was four entities showed up for the walkthrough. One of them was just an environmental firm to see if there was any environmental stuff. Um, another one was a historic, uh, renovation type company. And then it was these two. And these, these were the two guys who actually went up in the attic. Uh, the others didn't even bother going up into the attic and, and they were very interested and would love to have more bids, but I'm not sure we would got a lower price than what we got right there.
No, that seems pretty competitive.
Yeah.
And we're moving forward.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's great. Okay, thank you, Jeff. Appreciate you coming in. Be safe.
You bet.
Okay. Um, we have another little bit early meeting. We're going right through this, Lean. Um, I'd like to bring up our eight o'clock, uh, agenda scheduled from Melissa Kuna from Gorham Pond Road. Uh, complainer on internet service and options in Dunbar. We have a package that we all have gotten and received in reference to it and, uh, we all provide, um, this is Meredith Wrist here as well. And we have Cheryl, Cheryl Mount here as well. Okay, if you guys wanna either come up or you can actually speak from right there, but who wants to take the reins on this?
I mean, I've seen, I've made a few phone calls. I guess I will.
Okay.
So, oh, sorry, this is Melissa Kuna. I live twelve oh one Gorham Pond Road. And I moved there about a month ago and I work from home, or I'm supposed to work from home. And there is no suitable internet for ten houses on Gorham Pond Road. It stops at eleven sixty-nine and ends at the Goffstown line. Um, I've called Consolidated Communications, I've called Dunbarton Telephone, I've called for the state communications. And all of them tell me, Dunbarton Telephone says they cannot go past eleven sixty-nine. They don't have any agreement to do it. Consolidated says the only thing that they can provide to us is D S L. But because of how far away we are from the switch, which I guess is in the middle of Goffstown, yeah, there's no sense in getting the internet up because you can't even check your email with it. Um, so I've tried HughesNet, that was my only option, it's satellite. Unfortunately, I work for a mortgage company and I have to connect through a V P N. You cannot connect through a V P N through satellite, it will not work.
Yeah.
So I travel across town to my Hughes every morning and I go to work for fourteen hours a day or twelve hour, I have to work. And then I go back home. But there shouldn't, there should be an option for the people that live on the street. And I don't understand why Dunbarton Telephone can't provide to the remaining ten people? Or why can't Comcast come in since they stopped at the Goffstown line? Why can't they come in the rest of the way into Dunbarton to provide another service, another company other than just Dunbarton Telephone for internet? They're willing to give fiber optic- I called them originally, they told me yes, and I was like, are you sure? And they said, and customers, yeah, yeah, we should, we service that area. Then next day on our phone call it said, no, we don't, we don't have an agreement
Melissa, from who?
To come here. From Comcast Xfinity.
Yeah.
They said they didn't have an agreement to come over here.
So, that being said, we read most of your letters pretty complete. I think I talked with Melissa maybe a few weeks back, two to three weeks ago. I did some initial contacting with Dunbarton Telephone Service to try and get to the bottom of those customers. And like you guys found out, they confirmed that their service doesn't go down the rest of that road. Consolidated, which bought out another company, owns part of those poles. The poles in most of the area of town are owned half by the telephone companies and half by the utility companies. That's pretty common for the small towns around here. And the only way that telephone companies get reimbursement back for whether they have their wires on there or fiber optic like we just got in the rest of town is that seventeen dollars and twenty-six cents per phone line that gets back to them. A single phone lead in Dunbar's around thirty-two dollars, of which a bit, a lot of it's broken down to federal and state level fees. And Dunbar Telephone out of thirty-two dollars gets seventeen, less than seventeen and a half cents. So I followed up with them on a bunch of the stuff you guys had in here. And Lean had a thought that now that we have fiber optic, another company could come in here on that fiber optic line because there's a no compete clause and other companies can come in. And I wanted to clarify that with them. Comcast has its own fiber optic line. They do not run on other people's lines. So they're a cable system that turn fiber optic and has their own systems. And they maintain their own lines. They don't go on anybody else's lines. And then you get other companies like Granite State Communications, which is who provides the rest of town with internet service. That was fairly slow with the telephone line, but I'm still using it. I mean, it's, it's around fourteen thousand on their lowest level compared to seven hundred and twenty, which you would have gotten on Consolidated.
Right.
You know, so it's, that seven twenty obviously couldn't even work for me. Almost probably couldn't open up the internet, so. Dunbar Telephone is aware of this and they're aware of the situation. And what they had is they had a clause in place where they could work to these ends of the roads, the parameters where the other companies. Now, some sections of town, some sections of road, like going down into Bow, they cover some Bow people have Dunbar telephone numbers. And other sections in Goffstown, people have Dunbar numbers on Black Brook Road where Dunbar Telephone goes over. All those sections where they overlap, they have now, in the last couple of years, completed having fiber optic everywhere there. That section you have was controlled by a different company and they have no authority to go on there. Although they realize that people are in our town there. Now that you've provided the town with these letters, these signatures and all that, I met with them twice today and they're willing to go to Consolidated and ask if they can run fiber optic on their poles. They'll have to get in with separate agreement in there and there may be a situation where we have to sign something for different companies to do that. But the fact is that Consolidated will have to give them the ability to do it. They think Consolidated may do that because they have a service that doesn't really provide for you people in that area.
Right.
So it's not a hundred percent that that's gonna happen, but they're willing to call as early as tomorrow now and I've given them the information.
Okay.
One thing they asked to get from you people was phone numbers, whether they be cell phone numbers or home numbers or both, for each of the nine people that you guys have put on here.
Okay.
I, I wanna say nine families. There's more than nine people have signed here because your husbands and wives and relatives.
It's nine homes.
Nine homes. So if we can get cellphone and/or home phones, if they have them, for those people, send that into Lean tomorrow, we'll get it off to them.
Okay.
And I think what they wanna do is they probably will call and confirm anybody when they do provide that service, if they get the approval to put that on the poles. I've checked with them to see if they're gonna use an out-of-state company or out-of-town company to run that wire, the fiber optic. Now that that company is pulled out of town, they run all the remaining fiber optic. They're gonna run the wire if they get permission themselves. So it could be very timely compared to, you know, we had to wait over two years, two and a half years to get this town all done in fiber optic over the last couple of years.
Right.
But they're willing, if they get that approval, to run that themselves and then run each individual house and get you guys set up.
Okay.
So I think from, from one to a, from a, something that wasn't really gonna go very far to something that probably could happen if Consolidated, you know, gives them that approval on the poles.
Okay. I hate to play devil's advocate, but what if Consolidated doesn't give them the okay to do that for us?
Then what you could do is take this same type of intent, go to Comcast and ask Comcast to come to the Dunbar Select Board with a proposal. It's kind of like the proposal we got from GSI to provide internet service over those lines. Not so much for internet service, but they had to come to us for a signed approval to give digital TV over that fiber optic line. In 2015, we signed that approval, not me, but the select group that was here then. And ever since then, they've been providing that digital TV over that fiber optic line or telephone line.
Okay.
And that approval's probably something that we would do if they come to us and ask us. In other words, we wouldn't go as a town and ask them to provide that service. But if you guys approach them, get them to fill something out, come to us if they think that they need to and go from there.
That's the alternative. I mean, we're crossing fingers, the principal way of going to Consolidated first may work.
What I think has happened is they, I think has happened is they've come to the Goffstown line with it because they had the approval to do the town of Goffstown back then. And then they stopped.
Right.
And it may not be worth it for them to come up those other ten houses because recouping the cost of that fiber optic line or their cable system may not be something that, you know, ten people or nine houses will pay off. But Dunbar Telephone did tell me they're very concerned about those few customers and they would like to try and do the job Consolidated will let them.
Okay. So my alert is I made a call, you know, not knowing who to call first. I did call FCC just because I want to, for them to help guide me on something. Who can I call to help get this expedited?
Yeah.
So I spoke to Catherine of the FCC and she explained kind of how it worked and if there would have to be an agreement. Now, she said that we could possibly go to Comcast to get this agreement. She got me in touch with a person by the name of Diane at Comcast, who I've spoken to. She requested for them to go out and survey and figure out why we couldn't get service. She got a phone call back, which I already got an internal phone call yesterday from her that said that there was no agreement for Comcast to come into the town of Dunbar. So she's telling me that there has to be an agreement between Dunbar, the town, and Comcast. And once that agreement is signed, that they can come in here, a franchise agreement is what they told me.
Yeah.
Then they would provide service to anyone in Dunbar. But it would have to be signed by the town. So do I have to go back to Comcast again?
I don't think that Comcast has to provide us the agreement just like Granite State. And we sign that agreement. And I don't think any of the selectmen here have issues with that.
Okay.
Although you can also call Dunbar Telephone, call with those numbers and they can run that fiber optic line for you as well.
Okay.
Now, what you might wanna look at is, I know that a lot of people have those Comcast bills. My brother's one of them. You know, he thought it was gonna be good to have his TV and phone and internet and everything through there. And all I hear them people do is complain how high their bill got by the time they get those things established.
They don't have HughesNet, HughesNet is incredibly expensive.
Yeah.
Yes.
And, and you know,
They're not these are.
Dunbar Telephone, if you do have the fiber optic internet service, you do have to pay for that telephone charge. That's their only way to recoup that. And a single line fee is thirty-two dollars a month approximately, he told me. So you have that along with your internet service.
And you have to get the phone in order to get to internet service.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So I just wanna make you aware that.
It's a business practice, which I don't particularly care for, but it's a business practice.
Right.
Thing is, as I have respect for that standpoint, but if I could drop my landline, I'd drop it. And I was made to.
But they're, they said they were very concerned about it and they were willing to do that and run it on all the pools and up those driveways. And some of those driveways down by where you guys live are very long, across the street. I think some of the runs up the driveways are longer than the road when you go with that or something. So they said that they would do all that and all they asked for was the names and numbers.
Okay.
So I thought, you know, a couple of weeks ago, I thought we were gonna be dead-ended here. And in fact, they were discussing it in turn within their telephone company for quite a while now. And this brought it to light, and the fact that you have these letters. You know, the governor wants right now for children being home and everybody being homeschooled. He wants everybody to have some of that service. So they're gonna use your letters to pressure Consolidated, whoever they need to at the state to get that line run for you.
Okay.
So I think it's a win-win system. You have a local company here to deal with and, you know, I think it's something that would work.
Okay.
But as Dave said, I know that when Granite State, they came in, at that time I was in the audience, but the first guy that came over to get a contract, paid a presentation and the select board was considering it and they had to come a second time. And then before they signed that.
Right, our attorney ended up reviewing that contract and making some changes.
See, Dunbar Telephone already has an agreement within the town of Dunbar. So if they get an agreement made with Consolidated, I don't believe it's anything this board needs to see, they could start immediately. Consolidated will work with them.
But if they don't, it has to come from Comcast, Comcast.
Yes, that's right. Now, just so we're clear, if there was another company here like Granite State Communications, they could come to the town and request to use those fiber optic lines. Comcast doesn't because they run on their own system. But if there was another company like Granite State Communications, they could run on the line. And you guys asked me in reference to Comcast, Comcast doesn't.
I did ask Consolidated today if they could do that, or not Consolidated. I called Granite State today and was trying to see if they could run their lines on the Consolidated poles. And they, they put me on hold and called Dunbar Telephone and told me I had to call Consolidated back. It's been more hours of phone calls, calling in circles, which has been painful.
Right, and it is painful, but you gotta understand that Granite State has an agreement with Dunbar Telephone. They don't have one with Consolidated, so see.
But what I was hoping to get accomplished was maybe getting them to call Consolidated to see if they can, knowing that it literally stops four, four telephone poles from my house, to get them to see if they could run their lines on four, the ten or twelve more phone poles.
Well, the good news is the legwork you guys have done. I think you're, I think you probably are gonna be answered here very shortly. As long as Consolidated will work with them, they don't seem to have a reason that they won't, so.
Okay.
Until Consolidated says they won't.
I had people knocking on my door at nine o'clock on Saturday morning after they got these letters because it's just been hard with everybody working at home.
Yeah.
It's just, it just seems unfair. I know I'm repeating what I've already said in the water, but it's just been really hard for everybody.
Now, just remember, two years ago, none of the town of Dunbar had fiber optics. They were all working on phone lines.
When we heard that fiber optic was coming, we were hoping that it included all the way down the road and then we just kind of.
And it didn't because the poles didn't go there. But you know, certain ends of town that people spoke up on, got it first, and then they filled in the other areas as they were main trumped and thought were more important. But, you know, it was a long road for us to get there and, you know, living in these rural towns, that's what you get kind of, yes.
And we have basically DSL and the thing is, as you go further away from the substation, I mean, people would get dropped off, clearly your part of town would get dropped off quite a bit on Tannehill Road. It's just too far away from the substation to get a good signal.
I've been using the satellite for the seven years I've been working here. I work from home two days a week normally, which has been hard. And I've relied on libraries and restaurants and things when I really need. And then the satellite has gotten better. I used to not even be able to send an email from the satellite and it's, it's better. But now trying to do video conferencing or anything like that, I just can't keep up with that.
So I think that, you know, when I was at Dunbar Telephone this afternoon, after Lee and I had met, I spoke with Scott, Dave was there, his brother came in, the guy that works on the lines came in. They were down at Gorham Pond today.
Breaking the track is on the way.
Yeah. Yeah, they're like, this lady waved to us, this person said hi, they're like.
It's so hard to become really good friends, I'm always so weak.
Part of the problem was is some of your neighbors, until you guys did this legwork,
Yeah.
were happy with what they had or did not wanna hook into a system and have their costs go up. And obviously, when you do hook into this and you get the higher speeds, it does go up. And now all of the neighbors have signed this and are willing to do it. So they can use that, now that's gonna fulfill the road for them, so. I think that if you called them and give them those names tomorrow, they'll be happy to work with you. Hopefully this process will start.
Keep us informed of what you guys hear on your end.
But if you get us those phone numbers tomorrow and they're ready to start working out, they want to make the call today.
Okay. So do we just need to email them?
Email to Lean and then you'll send them over to Dunbar. Okay, thank you guys for coming in. Any more questions?
Thank you. I hear a lot of questions. You're talking about this contract with Dunbar. The town has no other contract with Dunbar. I'm not sure about the contract with Darken Books.
What are you talking about?
I know you mentioned that the town has a contract with.
Through GSI, you gave me a copy of the con, of the contract for telephone, I mean, not for telephone, for TV.
Okay, all right, so that's.
Over that same telephone and/or.
All right, so that's not Dunbar and Telephone, that is GS, GSI.
Yeah.
Granite State, GSI.
But Dunbar has a, Dunbar telephone, Lean owns half the poles, so they control the town. In other words, they don't have to go and ask anybody permission. If Consolidated tells them, okay, we as select people don't have to give them permission to go down that road.
It's a contract between those two.
Yes.
Just like they, they have a contract with Eversource, with Unitil, with whomever they.
Get the poles with it.
Yes.
Yeah.
So can we ask a question? If, so we are saying that Comcast does its own, runs its own fiber optic line. So if we did want to pursue, if I did want my guy to speak to me now, Xfinity, Comcast, then I would just have to keep calling them or get up with someone there in order for them to prepare an agreement for the selectmen to review and sign in order for Comcast to come into the town of Dunbar.
Yes, now, I want you guys to remember one thing and I'm only saying this because
Okay.
right now you have a group of you, okay? That group of you, if you decide to go through Dunbar Telephone, I would think you'd stick that rubber. If just one of you wants Comcast, it's not gonna behoove them to run that cable system up. Just to give you an idea, just the town of Dunbar, the cost was five million dollars to run fiber optic within our town. Okay, now, the part of that was a grant from the federal government to get it out of these road orders. And part of it was a cost they had to develop a business plan. And that's why it took them several years to get to that because it was a huge amount of money. But they realized people weren't gonna stay on phone lines forever, so they either had to do it or somebody else was gonna come and make a proposal to the town. So they've run this fiber optic in this town through a huge expense then. The only way for them to recoup that is through their small phone line fee. Because when you get the internet service, it's not through them. So that just kind of gives you a breakdown of the, you know, it's a huge expense. So just that little section of road might seem small, but it's gonna be a substantial amount of money still.
Right, okay.
So. I was just thinking that they're a local service, they've got the high-speed internet available through that fiber optic line already, I would think it'd be better to tie into that.
So I'm providing Dunbar Telephone names and phone numbers for people that are interested.
They have the names from your list, just the phone numbers that match up with those names.
So, okay, so if they're interested in, okay, pursuing through Dunbar Telephone?
Yeah. And what you guys wanna do is, I think you guys have made headway by getting into a group. You don't want that group to break up, I wouldn't think. Because Dunbar Telephone will probably pull back and say it will may not be worth our while. You know, so you have.
I think if it's, if you're given the option, it's, you know, I mean, so many people use the internet for whatever, whether you're using it for Netflix or, you know, road, or even for your kids or for work.
Right.
Or in that case, maybe we don't have an option there. Using that, the satellite doesn't work.
Okay, GSI has been, I, I thought it's been very good performance. I had no problems with it. I mean, they'll go off for a day or two, they'll give you a notice and all that kind of stuff. But overall, the, the fiber optic's been a good thing for this town.
And if they, if they're gonna go out for a maintenance thing, they're doing it in the middle of the night most likely. And if you call them, they have that service right over and waiting for people to help you and it's twenty-four hours a day, so.
Right.
It's been, all the problems I've had, they've been able to answer.
In fact, when we first came on, we were working on the board, about three years ago when I came up. I mean, when we had DSL, oh my God, it was a major hot topic. It's been, it's, it's quietened down almost, we don't hear anything about it anymore. Except, yeah, right. The thing is, but, but the thing is, again, we don't know about it and we can't give you advice or help you along the way. So it was, it was a good thing you got together.
Good.
You know, and I know a few guys called Scott, he was pretty receptive today when I was over there.
Yeah, I have to call him because I had to call him the other day. I was like, what am I getting internet at my house?
He, he said, he said that. He did say that you guys have both been very nice to speak with. And Lean said the same thing.
Yeah.
We're not mean, we just.
Why don't you internet?
It's just not going away, right?
Yeah, we're not, yeah, we're like one of those little chicks, you know, that's how true to.
But yeah, I was surprised how much it changed when I went back for my phone call this morning to this afternoon. They're really interested in trying to take care of the rest of the road there at Dunbar.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hey, I'm going to do your last one.
Okay, what I, what I do, I do that, we do the air, uh, I just, thank you.
Yeah, they are, I know that, I, I hear a lot of people from Comcast, you know, they just don't like how the fees just climb on them.
The triple, triple warranty package when you get up there, everything goes up the button, how much? Hundred fifty dollars. Yeah, you get three things, but still it's a hundred fifty dollars.
It's essentially only a hundred and twelve now, once we're offering.
I'm going to get HBO and Cinemax.
I don't know how long I've had my service through Granite State, but it's never gone up.
Well, the thing, you get the three, oh, Granite State's gone up a little bit, mostly those are the FCC fees and the state fees.
And mine hasn't, I don't know why it hasn't, but.
Did you know that every year in September, when they have their little to-do over there, when you re-sign your contract, you get a free month, and my price hasn't changed from what it was before, it's the same price.
Yeah, mine was always.
They give you, they give you one free month when you're there, you're signing down a contract.
But I'm still on DSL, I'm old fashioned.
That's just because they get you for another year.
Oh, you're at, you're at DSL? Oh, yeah, I can dial all my motions, I don't have any issues, so. But they keep calling me, they want me to change, but again, it's going to go up a little bit.
But the contract we have with GSI was that Roku contract that they came in here to sell us on. They made the presentation.
He's got a copy of that, but that kind of.
And then, and then they came back and they finally got a commitment to do that, you know?
Well, I'm glad, I think that, I think there was a lot of progress, when I went over there after I left you today, they were, you know, I, I talked with them in the morning and they.
It seemed very receptive.
Very receptive this afternoon, they had some internal meetings and they decided, you know, they want to take care of the people.
Anyway, nine more people added to account, that's a win-win for them too.
Yeah.
If they can do it right.
Okay. The next thing we have here, Lane's got them packaged up, is review COVID-19 grants. We have three different grants here. We have a first responders grant for the PD and fire department. What's this one, the Goford? Goford grant.
G O E.
Goford.
G O F E.
Goford.
Goford grant, yeah.
And that's for our town reimburse expenses up to sixty-eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-four dollars. I think through the end of the year, we'll get into that later.
It's a user loser, I think.
And the cares municipal relief grant covers payroll and taxes. So, let's start with the first one, which is the first responders, and covers fire and police.
So that particular grant has already been approved by the governor. The fire, both the fire department and the police department have completed the forms with their full-time, part-time, volunteer employees and.
It's a stipend program, right?
Stipend program for the first responders. Total cost for the police department, I think I've got a flag of approximately sixteen thousand. And then the police, fire, volunteer fire department is about fifteen and change.
Yeah, so the police department was sixteen thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fourteen cents, and the fire department was fifteen thousand, seven hundred and forty-two dollars, eighty-six cents, for a total of thirty-one thousand, nine hundred dollars.
So my question for the board is, this is already given, it's already been approved, it's in the process of, we're in the process of receiving that money. There were questions going around as to how the money would be distributed to the employee. We've not received that money as of yet, it's a full eight-week program that they're covering with that money and personally, I feel if the, if the board accepts or is approving this, we actually don't have any choice, it would be in the best interest for the town to receive the grant first before we distribute the money to the employees. I went, because they're even pay weekly, which we're already in the process of, would be, you know, house weeks, and it's a total of eight weeks, so if we get the money in hand, then the board can make that decision as to how they want to pay the employees.
You know, I have to agree with you, and I'll give you an example. The governor gave the long-term care facilities an extra three hundred dollars a week for the people who are working, because they have the Medicaid patients as well, as a Medicare patient. They haven't seen any money yet, so I think it might be prudent to wait till you get the money before you give it. I mean, they can accrue it, and when you get the money, then you can pay that. But I think it's better to get the money in hand rather than give out the money and then find out you're not getting the money for some reason, for whatever reason, you know?
I, I concur with that, I'd have money in hand before we start ending the costs.
Especially when we're making a slow, I mean, I don't see on this grant where we need a signature from us on it.
We do not, it's doing a boost grant, we should, we should be expecting that dollar amount, but my real question to the board was, how and when will I be able to distribute all their funding according to the paperwork that we submitted? Again, I don't feel comfortable with spending money that we don't have yet, so.
Well, the first check would be for the, for the arrears, go back to the arrears once we get the money. And then, would you want to recommend on a weekly basis, or buy weekly or monthly?
Personally.
It's only eight weeks.
I think we have to follow the schedule a half a day, like.
I don't, no, no, the, the questions are going back and forth, you can, as a town, allocate the entire amount, or the town can do it weekly, any which way that we want, from, from a office staff burden, I would say, give it to them.
One time. I was thinking the same thing, Lane, why make it harder on you guys to track? Where we can track it once, do it and be done with it all as one fund, once we got the funding.
I have worked with our payroll software company, and we have established the liability account. It will allow us to track, and then it's strictly separate from the operating budget, so. We're ready to go with the computer as soon as we get the funding in the bank, basically.
Based on what I've said, we may be paying the arrears, we're probably getting.
So I'll make a consensus that we wait till we get the funding and then we'll do it at one time, are you guys okay?
I don't have a problem with that, I'd like to see the money first, because.
Yeah, that's what I said, yeah.
We keep hearing that they're funding this one, they're funding that one, but everybody's waiting to see if they're getting the money in. You know, I don't know.
I guess we need to let the department heads know that we're.
When we receive the funding.
And consensus to pay it all at one time, once we receive.
And then the one thing that we did check, again, and a lot of questions and answers going back and forth, this particular type of grant funding does not require public hearing, so we accept when we receive the funding and the funding is available, you can just give me your blessing, I can make the payments.
And we don't have to accept that funding like a nation.
No, 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 public hearing required. And, but I did also did want to point out that with all those questions going back and forth, this grant does not cover payroll taxes. So there will be an additional step that my office will go through, and it's called the cares municipal relief grant. And so as soon as we get that funding, I'll make sure that we have the emails or the resources to try to get to that next step. Because when I did my quick calculations, we'll be over five thousand dollars in profit and payroll taxes.
Okay, so the next grant, and we do have to sign this one if accepted.
That's correct.
It's not to exceed the sixty-eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-four dollars. There are several things Lane pointed out to me that are acceptable amounts of money that we can put in here, and some are not acceptable amounts of money, and so each item will have to be gone through. And I think they're going to do a good job, I see a later email that Jennifer is going to help Lane consolidate and do a spreadsheet of these items. And she okayed it, and I'm okay with the extra hours to do that.
Yeah.
Because we're getting recouping the money for the town anyway.
Correct, so the, the process for that one is the board has to accept the grant. Does not guarantee we will get that total amount, but it allows us to.
Drop on it.
Really take advantage of all these added expenses that we weren't anticipating, compiling them on, on a list and then submitting our, our expenses.
The sixty-eight is just a cap.
A cap, yes.
Right, so I'll make a motion that we accept the Goford coronavirus relief fund grant agreement with a capped amount of sixty-eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-four dollars. We're going to provide the appropriate literature for what we do accept back, and I make a motion that we accept that grant, and sign this form.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'll send it around for signatures. What's the date of date like?
So we'll be getting, we'll get moving on that right away, because we have two months worth of expenses to gather up. I've already sent emails out to all departments and out in identifying some of those items. And those are due by the first week of June, so as long as we get this first round done, there's less time with the other two months to follow, but we'll have a handle on what to expect and what to look for.
I told Lane that I will come in once they have the breakdown. I'll read through the document to make sure what's covered and what's not covered, and we'll check their bills and try to make sure that our first submit will do it, we don't get anything rejected if we can.
Well, hopefully Jennifer will come and be able to use her financial. Would Jennifer come in and she can do a review of the one?
No, your PPEs are covered, right?
Yes, they are, yeah. My initial layer, our office staff's initial layer, is not, but.
But you know, Woody's using PPEs on a regular basis and his crew, and you get the fire department, many runs in, many runs in, you expended a lot of PPE already.
Yes, we have. And the tax collector.
I'll put it over here for him.
Uh, I've got another half, okay.
Uh, wait a second, you want to do something? I just want to say thank you to Lane, Lane put out a message earlier to all department heads to stop keeping a track of what they're spending and stuff, so kudos to Lane.
Lane, there is another payment title authorized representative.
Okay, that one there is to authorize me to handle any necessary paperwork on your behalf. Sign me, yeah. I'm basically pointing at someone in the office that will manage and communicate with the grant people so that we can get that to move forward.
Lane, there was one other signature page, but I don't see a signature here, the cares municipal requires. I think it's looking for a cost, not so much a signature.
Okay, I'll send you a little bit carefully in more.
Let me know, if I need to print, sign something else, I will.
Yeah, fine, well, I just need to make sure that we get it off the table before there's a deadline or we won't make the grant application.
Oh. The cover sheet, there's two signature pages.
Well, let's actually copy, because we're in copies, they have probably been highlighted. I didn't want to send them a highlighted version, but I wanted to point out, the necessary paperwork, I need to review it.
Okay, we don't need to send a second one, do you?
No. Did you find a chance initially with different pages, see all those flags? There are initials at the bottom of the page.
We just came from your office.
I don't, I, in the past, we had all of you sign a number with all this.
It looks like just one.
It's kind of like a one.
Initials and dates, I'll tell you what I'll stay a little bit after and I'll do, I don't think we all want to, because it's just asking for one, right?
That makes sense, we had some from the police department apply for grants, and they'd come back and get the other two selected ones to sign.
I'll tell you what, we'll, we'll sign these after, just stop in and sign them. Just so we don't hold off the whole meeting.
We want to get them done early, because she wants to send them tomorrow.
I want to send them in tomorrow.
Oh, you do, we'll stay after the meeting, I guess. Okay. Well, we might be done our meeting anyway, so. While we were on, Lane and I keep getting emails in reference to PPE equipment. There's a municipal PPE equipment section, I get an email, I'm sure you do, of who we call for face masks and gloves and.
But you have to keep in mind, I get about a hundred emails a day in high school to the bottom, and they're from California.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't.
I think this is a state municipalities email where any municipality looking for PPE equipment that's having trouble finding it.
Yeah.
I know that someday, we're going to take our transfer station, open it up to regular hours, regular recycling, and we don't have a stockpile of PPE equipment for them yet.
Well, when we had our joint loss meeting this week, every single department that was represented here, all came to the agreement that in, rather than duplicate everyone's effort, because it's been very stressful for every single department in every wood plate you can think of, that Chris Rimmelar has been involved with grants and finding the right resources and the places to go to, and he has been able to provide my office with masks, thermometer, gloves, and I asked him if he would be willing to be the go-to person if we needed to get more of that.
I don't, I don't care where we go, but I know that I've asked Woody to start on it. We seem to be almost dead-ended, I mean, I see their face masks that were made at home.
Yeah.
That were handed out there, which is one thing. We talk about face shields, eye gogs, I think Woody might have the eye gogs, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Then the appropriate gloves.
Yeah.
Just want to make sure that we have. A box of them down there, so that when we're ready to go, we're ready to go, and I haven't seen that in a month's time, any headway.
Woody did say he ordered some, but again, John Wigan is an agreement to ask to go through Chris, so that we're not duplicating everyone's.
Can, can we make a call to Chris next week and double-check with what they need up there? I'd like to have it stocked in Woody's area and rent.
I agree with Dave, the thing is that we can't, can't be thinking two weeks, we got to be thinking two months.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And so I just want to have them there for the safety of our workers, because I don't want to open it up regular until we know we have that in place.
But you can't be thinking short term, you got to think of a long term.
And, you know, we're talking about in a month.
You want stock available, that's available now.
Yeah, and I'm talking goggles, face mask.
Gloves.
And, and proper masks. Yeah, gloves, I think the glove part, he was in advance on a little bit, so I think we're okay there, but I'm not sure.
You know, even the fire department, I mean, it's, it's nice to have, I, I like the fact that we're going with one point of contact. Who knows the areas that we got them from, down in California, for example.
Well, when they thought, you know, they were going to have some stuff available from the fire department, they want to hold it to see how long they might need it, so I don't want to rely on somebody else's.
No, no, we're not relying on maybe taking the fire department's extras. We're going ahead and making sure that.
And the thing is, and the thing is, there's a time, the sixty-eight thousand dollars for PPE, which we just talked about that grant, it's time-sensitive too, so I, we may need to remember, the money may not be there if we don't execute now.
No, no, I do, we'll be capped at sixty, but it should be.
Right, I, I don't, there's no reason why we have to give it back, we should be executing as soon as we can.
Yeah.
Okay, now we're going to go to town business to try and get this, there's no town business on our agenda, Lee.
Just mailbox.
Mailbox. Is it down there? Hey, I thought it skipped, I thought we were done, but we're not.
No, we're not.
Okay. Give me this here. We have a petition for dog pole license.
Not dog pole, it's just.
Petition and pole license.
Yes, for utilities.
Oh, utility poles, where did I get the dog fire? It's getting late.
That is a form that the town clerk receives when a utility or telephone company requires replacement of a pole. I did communicate with the road agent on that, and he said he was all set, the location of the pole, he was familiar with, and we were all set to proceed and sign that, and that is in triplicates, she needs to distribute one to the company, which helps and another individual, so she's asking.
Triple signatures, we need all that. We all received an email from the town moderator, Randy O'Leary, and I'll just review these items here, I don't think there's anything to sign on it. And what they were doing is hosting a Zoom session to look at the upcoming elections and look at how they're going to place those elections, there's no, nothing that we need to do right now. It was just talk with the secretary of state.
But they are.
Keep them real in the loop on it.
They are prepared to make additional purchases that would, that will fall under that PPE grant that we have, that we have to make sure that they, we need a loop so that we can add those expenses.
I guess that they can face masks and all that stuff too. Because it's the time of year to open our election.
Yeah. We have appointments here we do each year for the code enforcement, building inspector and the health officer. And both John Wigan and Mike Kaminsky.
I've come in, yeah. Have agreed to be the.
I can set you up the name, Mike. We excited about a couple more things?
This is committee now. Do you want this over here?
Yeah, I need just the. And we have a request for a leave for some vacation time, six hundred, six five. Total of forty hours. That looks like here, annual vacation for our office personnel.
I see we did.
Oh, so.
Yeah, I think you did.
That's the old one, Mike, Bob, just to show you that we do this on a regular basis.
Okay.
So just need to top one, three.
We get a complaint in from a local, not a local resident, but a local person that owns property here in town. We've talked about this a little bit in our last meeting. There was a boiler taken out of a building here, local, from an apartment building here in town. And from what I understand, talking directly with the chief and reading his emails, is that boiler was removed from the building before he had knowledge it was going to be done. Therefore, it became a civil case and nothing he could deal with. And it was not done after he was notified, although in this letter from this building owner, it states the opposite. I checked with them personally, I think you checked with them.
I haven't talked to them.
And we have an email, Bob checked with himself.
He checked with his county attorney to make sure he was on spot on, correct.
I appreciate them sending a letter, but I think it is a civil matter at this time. I'm going to notice in here that they are going to have the, it looks like Chuck Frost sent one. Can you please post this memorial day ceremony notice to the town website, even though the ceremony is canceled? At the community center, we're still planning to hold an outdoor ceremony with social distancing due to COVID-19. You have the date on that, Lynn?
It's on my notice.
Memorial Day, twenty twenty. May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty.
Eleven AM?
Eleven AM, sorry. Arrive at ten fifty AM. That's nice that they're going to do that. That's our beside. The funny stuff never ends here tonight. We had a snake within our building last week.
Yeah.
In one of the closets in the town clerk's office. We're not sure if that came through or not. And it's been living in the building or if it came up from the basement through some cracks. The building inspector had put a couple of pieces of old roofing down in that closet now, so in hopes that would stop. And the reason this was given to us is because there are some closet areas that might have some areas where this might come up from the basement. And what I'd like to do is have the committee that looks at these buildings and looks at safeties and different issues of the building. I'd like to have that committee look at the different closets and areas around.
They met Monday.
I know.
Wednesday, this week.
Oh, Wednesday, yeah, I'm sorry.
So was this brought up at that meeting? Probably not.
Yes, it was. Yes, it was. Actually, the chief, because there was more concern with the mice, I think, than the snake. Don't come in, and that's a no sign.
Well, if we left the snake, the mice would.
Yes, I'm saying.
Well, they weren't evidently in the same office, they believe in droppings everywhere supposedly. So the chief is putting some, some type of traps down in the bottom.
Anything to do with the cracks, Bob, did they address?
Well, you know, I'm going to tell you, it doesn't take much of a crack for the mouse to get in, you know, I mean.
What about the snake?
Snake's the same way. I mean, if you have older buildings, they're going to find a way, no matter who you have to come exterminate. That was the other thing is, some people want to be very careful that they don't do any harm to the thing, but they want to get rid of it. You heard the thing with the stinky tape. They didn't want to trap them on the stinky tape or do them poison up. I mean, either you want to get rid of them, or you got to live with them.
So that's looking snake.
So one employee that works here a few days a week has asked if it's possible to have someone go in the basement and maybe look for light through the basement to see if there's any, you know, real visible light and perhaps put in some kind of.
Spray foam or something.
Spray foam of some sort to block the holes and maybe that would stop some of it, I don't know.
Roll the rollie right through the spray foam.
Oh, they will?
There's some spray foam up there, which is, which, half a road is big, it's, it gets stuffed in the foam. Off scent, some road, you probably.
Maybe it was.
It's against.
Maybe we'll get through.
I don't.
I know they did put some foam down in this closet, I think Mike.
Yeah.
Mike Kaminsky.
I got three lights on my truck plan this week, last week.
So I guess we'll leave that for that committee to take a look at again.
We've already discussed it.
Oh, you did?
I don't think that the committee goes under cabinets and inspects closet doors.
No resolution from the committee?
I would say that if it's an action of the board, they have our handyman, maintenance guy, go in the basement, see what he can see for light.
The concrete there, one?
Pardon?
Yeah.
And if there's anything that's really noticeable with light, turn on all the lights. Then perhaps he can focus on just those areas and fill them in and just make the employee feel safe that we've acted on it. If it doesn't stop for them, then we revisit something else.
What's a consensus, Bob?
I don't have a problem with them either.
Okay.
I will say, I will say, all you need is a little bit of a slice in your weather stripping and a mouse is coming in.
Hmm.
You know, I mean, they, they don't need much room at all.
I agree with Bob.
Okay. So we go ahead and do that.
They'll make you feel good, so.
There was a nice article waiting for it to us. I think it's the second time I've been to buy email. About our some waste operators and transfer station employees. You know, everybody talks about nurses and doctors and people running ambulances and fire departments and police. But these guys probably have more contact with people than most of those departments because they have all the people coming through to the transfer station. They have close contact with them, close contact with things that have been in the different houses. And, you know, it does go a long way when you look at, you know, they're talking about somebody down there that manages and runs the whole thing, might get paid the same amount as a secretary that has almost no contact with people. And I just think, you know, it hits, it hits home, those people down there, you know, they've almost been in fistfights down there the last couple of weeks. It really, they've really done a great job down there and I think that, you know, this goes a long way and I think that later on, we're going to be looking at some of the payments. Lynn gets her information back on that. Just to make sure that in that area, we're still doing a good job.
I have the proposals of tonight.
Yeah, okay. So we have that on the agenda too. The next one, I guess we get a consensus in the board of, Dana Lavoie has given us, he's still going to review the utility bill, but has told us that he thinks our thoughts with combining all five of the bills so that they can apply the additional payments to those bills, have them all in one bill is a decent idea. So I'd like a consensus that we give Lynn the ability to call up Eversource and combine those bills.
I think he wanted to wait one more month just to see what the bill looks like.
No, he said to go ahead and do it.
He said go ahead.
Yeah, on this last email.
I have no problem with that. It makes, it makes sense. Why, why?
He said he's still going to review the bills is what he said, but he said go ahead and do it.
Okay, so.
And he said he's available if anybody wanted to talk to him about it.
Get that, Lynn? Okay.
Okay. I have another email here in reference to a person, a resident that lives on twelve Williams Court, moved to Dunbar. She thought it was unfair that she didn't have any internet options other than what the town of Dunbar telephone has in her, but she does actually, she can do satellite like other people have tried, which is not a better service. She thinks that they have a monopoly over it and as we discussed earlier, it was pretty expensive for them to run fiber optics around this town. And if there was somebody other than Grand State, they could actually run on that fiber optic within this town, but I checked with the telephone company earlier today and they're not aware of any other company.
Comcast wanted to come in, but I don't think we would say no Comcast.
We wouldn't, but they have to get ability to go on their poles, see whether there's enough room or not.
Exactly, exactly.
Nothing to do with us.
Correct. And the thing is, we do have options. I mean, we, you still, for example, use DSL.
Yeah.
And if you want fiber, you can upgrade to fiber. To me, one of the problems, we live in a rural, it's a challenge and you got to ask those questions before you move in to understand that you may be limited or you may not be.
And so what I understand is this person is on fiber optics.
Yeah.
They just don't like having to pay for the phone service to get the fiber optic, which it's a two-sided sort of, as we learned earlier tonight, it's the only way they have to get the revenue back with that fiber optic.
And I, I said earlier, I don't necessarily like it, but the thing is, I, I don't want them to go out of business either.
Right.
There may be no replacement.
Right. So, so that's just another letter on our file. I just wanted to.
I'm glad she's got fiber going, that's good.
Yeah, I originally thought she had DSL like mine, but I did confirm and she was running the fiber optic, even though it's, it's the slower version of it.
I just, for three months, I upgraded to the, I was running middle speed and I took advantage of the three-month special to try the high speed.
Yeah.
It's all right, but the thing is, I, I think it's, my television is still, I mean, everything's still about the same.
Yeah.
I don't really see a huge difference, so I'm going to whack middle tier after my three trials over.
Oh, okay. Okay, we discussed this earlier tonight. We have, we have an option for the TBS store, lit up sign at a permanent location on the southern side of town here where we already use that speed sign here. And I don't, I like the fact that they move it around every two weeks myself, because that sign gets used on five other roads in town that there's signs set up on and.
I think your own agent had some good concerns about the energy.
Yeah, damage in the winter and he's not interested in maintaining it. So it's my thought that we leave it as a mobile one right now, but I don't know what you guys have for consensus on it.
I'd say, I like the idea, I agree with you, but let's see what the police department has to say before we go further.
Okay, they haven't been in either, you know, this is just an email we have, sir.
So just so you're aware of it, we at one point had pursued a crosswalk for the church. And it was very, very complicated because it involved the town, the state right away and whatnot, and how we would have to be responsible to maintain and we wouldn't be allowed to let it go back, you know, like fail. So once we went into that agreement and the selectmen said that they were not interested in being responsible for a blinking light and then it going failing. Yeah, headlighting, it would have to be maintained. If there was an injury of someone crossing and we were negligent in fixing it, it could be a liability for the town. So I.
I quite simply like the fact that, you know, we do have to put that up for a limited amount of time. They bring it back, they charge it, they put it in another location. I like the fact that it's moved in those five different locations and we could use it in more locations if we find a need. Say they're speeding on Leo's road, we can put on his road for a few weeks. We need to put it anywhere else, we can put it somewhere else.
Yeah.
But part of that program with buying one is, you know, like we moved it around. And we already got them a second one for more permanent location. So I just like the fact that it's moved and I know it's, it's work for them to do. But for my, for my viewpoint.
I don't have a problem. I haven't seen it yet at all. Even though they're moving around.
I know that when the police department does come to complain about speeders, they act on it and move it there and they do see results of people making a college assembly slow down. Right, no, but then they slow down.
I know that when I come in north into town and slowed me down several times, I was happy.
Crystal's another one.
Well, right now, I think, I was, I'm getting upset with that. I've seen a lot of, today was just a bad day for me as I come up to the town hall and I'm looking up and there's huge trucks going at least forty-five, fifty miles an hour down right through town here. And I think it's, to me, I think, I'm sorry?
Zero police officers.
Zero police officers around and we need to have a little more enforcement in the village district. Now, I'm going to talk, I'm going to give a call to the chief tomorrow. Just, I just think we have to step up our enforcement of the village district here because it's thirty miles an hour. And believe me, I saw, it was a, it was a, what was it, should I say, lumber trucks?
Logging trucks.
Logging trucks.
Well, I will tell you.
He was hauling.
I will tell you, that sign has been just as south of town here. And I've slowed down several times and while we were in this meeting, I saw the lights and.
Oh, I saw it.
Going tonight, so.
Yeah.
No way.
There's some coverage out there.
Some coverage out there, but I was just trying to get out and I'm seeing, boy, I'm just, I'm glad I didn't pull up in front of him because he was hauling like forty or fifty.
Okay. The last thing I'd like to talk about under this is we talked about a flow schedule here at the transfer station and John Wigan had gone down there last week and the traffic was out after our first Saturday out onto the main road. And, and, you know, people were up to forty and forty-five minutes, some of them, most of them were under fifteen or twenty minutes, but some went longer than that. And I went down and met with Woody because John brought some things to my attention. Even though we blocked this second lane, he was thinking that the person could come up in the second lane and then the next car could come out in front and they could load the hopper from two different directions without getting in close contact. I spoke with Woody about that and I gave him the ability to change that flow if he wanted to. But only if he wanted to. Right now, they closed that door. And they kind of leave that as a person's area, safe area to oversee what's going in the hopper without being, you know, face to face from both directions with people. So I told him to use that. The other thing we did is, he was working with a few cones he had, a few cones from the fire department. You know, he's looking for volunteer cones everywhere. I said, Woody, we talked with you about this a couple of weeks ago. Go get the cones to do it properly. You can't control cars and flow without the right number of cones to bring people around the circle. So what we did to keep people off the road is we took these, there was three lanes in front of the transfer station. We kept the lane closest to the transfer station as the recycle slash wood lane. And the next two lanes, we opened up a double lane with the cones coming down here. And he has one attendant stopping the car, so he lets one go at a time into the single row, onto the hopper. And that way it keeps two lanes of traffic off the highway, which last week worked real well, he said, for him. He said, nobody was out on the highway. I don't know if recycling on Saturday is going to be a good idea only because I see that lane is so short to the highway. This is our first Saturday and was fine on Tuesday and Wednesday.
Why does it work well?
He has the proper signage for the self-recycling. So if it becomes a problem on Saturday, we may have to go back to a Tuesday, Wednesday recycle only and not Saturdays. But we'll see how it goes this weekend before we decide that.
Right.
So I gave him the option if, if he decides this gets blown, lighted up too much. And he did do the exit out by the brush to proper way.
Yeah, that was working well.
So we did have a, we did have a complaint slash argument down there this week. I'm of a resident. And I think the resident might have just been venting because the day he was down, there was only one car in front of him. It was an elderly person. From what I understand, he was upset because our attendant wasn't helping the elderly person with the trash. But he didn't understand that we're not trying, we're not trying to help anybody with their trash.
It's really for protection of not only our employee, but that elderly person does not need to be exposed either. It's a dual protection.
And when I, when I talked with the resident, he wasn't aware that we had fights down there the weeks prior when people were going by each other and getting within their personal space, within, within the six foot distance. So.
Was he, was he receptive to that or?
He was, once I, once I spoke with him, um, when he was down there, he was very vulgar to one of our employees, I think the police did a follow-up call. Um, and I think that's all died down. Uh, this happened to another employee down there a couple of years back and the resident came back a few weeks later and apologized. Um, the resident has asked me about volunteering down there. And I think Bob's had some discussion for the.
I was gonna see if you would segue.
Yeah.
To that, you know?
So, um, I'm just gonna go over my ideas that I'll let Bob talk, but, um, he emailed me or texted me about two things he wanted to do. He wanted to help elderly people with their trash. Which is something that I don't think we should condone as a town, only because we're trying to keep that appropriate separation. Some people are gonna accept the help, but some people are gonna be in a fight. And we've already gone through that and decided to go away from it. The other thing he wanted to do was have a separate area where he could take their trash to keep the traffic flowing better and put it in a, a container or then roll in containers and then put it in the hopper when they're less busy. That again is handling somebody else's trash. We're handling it a couple of times at that point. And I don't think that's a good idea either, so. Um, I wanna see what Bob has talked to him about and see if it's any.
Well, the only thing that I mentioned to him is that if they consider that he'd have to sign a waiver similar to when we worked on buildings in the town, that takes the town out of liability with him doing that. You know, cause he talked about a ninety-year-old man that had a hard time taking his own trash out, you know? And he said, I, I would like to help the guy. So, uh, if you're gonna consider that, you need to have a waiver sign that says that the town's held harmless.
Right, and the other thing, Bob, is even though that guy looked like he might have been having trouble with his trash, I know some of the people that were the most upset with us because they're the most vulnerable are the elderly people. So you're trying to help somebody with the most vulnerable section of the population that wants you to stay away from them. Uh, several of the people that were very upset when we were letting people cross and from and back were elderly people. They stopped traffic and you know, had long discussions with our people down there. Um, they had to stop fights.
I think, so I think, uh, Woody should have the, I think he's got enough latitude to make a decision if Holly wants to open the second lane up on Saturday.
Right.
And so I, I would say just, let's see how it goes Saturday.
Yeah, and so that's what, that's what I left up. I don't think, um, I'm all for volunteerism. I just don't think this is the appropriate time for it.
Concur.
You know, the guy that was probably doing the vehicle.
Yeah.
Cause you can get it out.
Yeah.
I mean, do you wanna make a call and explain?
Yeah.
The process I'm taking, cause.
Do you know, all through this process, um, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a approach where we're damned if we do, damned if we don't. You do something to try and do the right thing, you find out it affects other people. You do something else, it affects other people. People don't like waiting in lines to buy groceries either, but it's a fact of the times right now.
You gotta see.
Bob's wearing a mask tonight, you know? All of these things are things we don't like to do, but we're having to do them. But I think that right now isn't the time for volunteerism down there. We're having enough issues just controlling our own workforce.
You know, if you, if you help the old guy, went above the person and decided to wrongfully, you know, under.
Yeah.
He's got, there's too many different scenarios that you could, you have to help everybody out. Why aren't you helping me out, you know?
And as we talked about earlier, you know, I'm not sure how this self-recycling will go. But it may be something that we continue to use in the future. You know, pre-sort the stuff, get there, put in the hoppers yourself, so we'll see how it goes. I did.
I thought during the week there was, I mean, I presuaded my stuff. It was, it was, it was easy.
Yeah.
And one attendant there to make sure you weren't dumping something stupid in there. And so it was working well.
And so, um, you know, as long as that doesn't get long left on Saturdays, I guess we're good.
And I think with social distancing and even the feds are telling you, you know, how far to stay apart and you can see it now in the markets. Supermarkets and they get everything marked off, you know, and, and in the direction to go in. So I, I think they have to appreciate the fact that you're trying to conform to what you're being instructed to do.
Right.
So that it doesn't go to everybody.
Through a stadium, federal law.
And I think, I think it's a crew that we do protect our employees because there's no depth down there. We get three employees come down with COVID. Cannot, right, the operation's gonna become too halting, too halting.
Well, for instance, this person gets, touches something.
Yep.
And what happens after that when they stop at the store by the way home and they see somebody or younger, you can be spreading it.
Absolutely. But then we, I think we have a consensus that we support you on, on your.
All right, I'll make the fun, the fun call tomorrow, I guess. Um, that's it on our town business. Now I wanna bring it back to the public. Leo's good. Lean, town administrator, she's good. Leo, I mean, uh.
Well, I got two things. One where I aired, uh, last meeting we had. Cause I just always like to see what the, uh, there were a couple of names mentioned that would have had some involvement in this. And this has something to do with the post they got knocked out. I got a chance to talk to, uh, Jeff and to Pete.
Yeah.
Uh, over at the garage. I happened to see him and I decided, I want to find out what it is. And I think the very least we should have done, cause that's what Jeff had intended on doing, was buying a post, going over and handing them a post and that's it. Fixing the wall, taking no hole. Just replacing the post that broke and leaving it that way. He said, that would be the best thing and it would be best even for Pete. Pete kinda nodded his head and he looked a little sheepish, so. I don't know what happened, but, uh, I would make a motion to just replace the post and leave it that way. Let Jeff take care of it.
Yeah.
And, and leave it that way.
What do you think, Mike?
I think, um, uh, basically I've watched you with the, uh, the, the video I recall. It was a direct hit. It wasn't due to smell being plowed. It was a direct hit of the, of the damage to the post. And I have no problem with replacing my post, so I, I'd say be done with it and give them, give them opportunity to have the post. And as replaced.
Twenty-dollar investment, you know, put it to bed.
Well, in, in a lot with Jeff.
So is the law should, my second is.
All in favor?
Aye.
Then my second one. And I'd like to get some kinds of decision because I know, you know, people will promise something and then that nothing's happening. And they're working hard, they've been working hard. Now they're dealing with whatever angst anybody has when they come in there is a step. Now Woody had wanted to take away the three percent and give them an increase. I just assume leave that alone and give them a travel allowance and, uh, it's, uh, predicated on the number of hours they work. Twenty-eight hours or more. If they work the whole month, they get a hundred dollars. Twenty-two to twenty-seven hours, they would get seventy-five. And twenty-one or less, they would get fifty. And they, uh, I, I actually wrote up something here just quick, cause that, just before leaving the house.
Fifteen month, Bob?
Right, true. That would be fifteen month. It'd be transfer attendants working their full shifts during the month will receive a travel allowance by the following schedule. And I just told him what the schedule was. An excused absence for illness or personal reason by the supervisor shall constitute a completion of their schedule. So if they talk to Woody about, you know, if they're feeling sick or, or they call in and they are sick and he says he's satisfied with that, but they have a personal reason. Cause sometimes something happens. And I don't wanna punish someone just cause something happened and they couldn't make it in to work, you know, so. Woody could be the, the person making that decision rather than pulling a rug out from under him. And at least they would have something. And the reason I put transfer attendant is cause I don't want everybody reading it thinking there's a benefit there that they're missing out on. So this is specific to them because of the work they do, which if you look at the industry, the wages aren't high to begin with. So this gives them a tax-free incentive that equals close to what Woody wanted to do by taking away the three percent and giving them a dollar or something raise.
Would that be just applicable to our trans-part-time employees?
Yeah, exactly. Just a transfer attendant. So, uh, man, unless you make someone else full-time, you know? It wouldn't happen, but, and the other thing is I'd like to go retroactive to April first. Cause they've been thinking about, you know, guys are him and Hawn and he's got a good crew right there, you know, and he's got a couple of people that.
Um, after we, after we talked about that, I talked with Lean a little bit about the tracking of that, the fact that Woody's gonna have to track that and then Lean and our payrolls will have another line item for that. It's my thought. And just my thought that we should just give them an increase of pay that will equal that same dollar value and not have it be something that we have to track separate above and below.
Well, it's not any different than we give mileage to an individual.
I realize that. That's also something that's.
Travel allowance, you don't have to worry about whether they get there in their vehicle or someone else's vehicle. And the other thing is when you're paying them cash in their pocket with the equal money, they're paying social security and they're paying Medicare and you have an increased cost on your worker's comp because they're making more money an hour.
I think that could, could that be done, uh, if somebody's a lot of that involved, that this office, there was.
It always has to, Mike, cause the payment goes through this office.
No, what I'm saying is the, uh, when, when Woody puts a, a, his timesheets in.
Yeah.
He just identifies on the timesheet, how many hours they completed for the month.
That can be done.
Can I just speak on that? Um, just the clarification, what your motion says is that they have to work the full week and then they would be reimbursed.
They work, they, they work the full month. They get paid once a month.
Right, but it would have to occur in the fall, the first week of the.
Oh, the fall week, right.
Okay, now there are reports that we can spit out for each employee that would give us the hours. It says eighteen, twelve and a month divided by the week. And you have an average and it would be fairly quick. Um, I would have to have Woody review that and approve that. Um, so it would be a little bit of involvement.
And it's another paycheck for each of them.
It would be, uh.
So separate check.
It was a separate check through, um, accounts payable.
Cause that takes away the worker's comp. It takes away all that other, and they make up, cause don't forget whatever they pay for social security and Medicare, the town does also.
I'd say, let's, I'd say, I like the idea. I typically try it for six months and see how it goes and then revisit it in six months, Dave. You know, if we do, we have to just do it.
Well, you can give some.
You know, number two, this isn't any different than the police's stipend.
Yeah.
And then all these other, all these other additions in that personnel plan that move part-time or gets any benefit from.
Are you, um, is it, would you say that during the period of this executive order through this COVID-nineteen, is that at the trial period of what we wanna do and then revisit it at the end of that?
Well, I don't wanna tie it to COVID. I don't think.
The only problem I have with that lean is the governor's, I think, gonna pull portions of that.
Okay.
And, uh, if he does, then this wouldn't go very long unless, well, like we retroactive like Bob said. I just, I just feel like if we could do it through their pay and not have an additional thing to track for Woody and you and anybody in your office, cause it's gonna create more work.
But, uh, again, it's, I don't think it's a whole lot of work, cause Woody's keeping track of hours. So he'll know what hours he's scheduling people for. Uh, I really don't see a big difference. I don't see a lot of, of tracking, you know, what's that.
They have what, five, four part-time employees and then Woody, the fifth, I believe.
But it's gonna be for the current school people.
What's that?
You're talking about including Woody?
No.
I wasn't, but it doesn't make any difference to me which way you're doing.
I'll tell you this.
But it's trying to hang on to these four people that he has a lot of faith in.
I'm gonna tell you something, he works as hard, if not harder than anybody down there. If we did something and didn't include him, he would be pretty slated. And I wouldn't blame him.
So, so that's, yeah. What I was trying to do is, because he made them a promise and I've been hearing about it every time I go to the transfer station. And so I'm trying to find a creative way of giving the town less impact and still giving them the ability to make. Uh, the issue is, if you add in the social security that they would have to pay in, in that, in what the town ordered, it might be close to being what they would have gotten. Now they got cash. They don't have to claim this. It's almost like, uh, the building inspector gets mileage and we always pay them slightly less than what the IRS recommends because this way here, he doesn't have to claim it on his taxes.
What are you, uh, what are you all about to involve?
Well, for, uh, twenty-eight hours plus, it's a hundred a month. Twenty-two to twenty-seven is seventy-five. And twenty-one or less is fifty. So it's not a whole lot of money, but once in a while you have, and I can use, uh, we have one individual that usually works the lower number of hours. But the other three people are there.
Almost thirty.
Almost all the time, almost twenty-eight hours, you know?
I, I, I think it'd be important to add Woody to that too. I mean, is.
No, no, I don't wanna exclude him. That's why I said, I didn't include him because I was trying to satisfy something that he promised people so that we get something done. Cause this was promised to him before the first of the year.
And we said we present after the election too, and the election's gone by.
You know, so, I mean.
The thing is, in the police department, I mean, they have their own, they have stipends for what they do. They have on-call pay and they have all sorts of stuff. I mean, I think, and the thing is, they're getting this incentive pay. It's, and as you said earlier, you read that article there, like, these are our employees who we have trouble keeping them.
They're frontline employees that never get any frontline pay.
Right, and now that we got COVID thrown onto them, I'd say this is a, a, a wise move to do it this time. And to keep it permanently there.
Well, you know, the thing is, I, I'm hoping they'll appreciate that so when things change, if they ever do.
I only have, um, I only say this cause I think it, I think it might be read this way. They'll read that and they'll like it. And then I think they're gonna forget about it. Cause it's not a dollar amount in their hourly pay. Some of the people, younger people, don't consider benefits like that, even though that's a dollar value benefit. Like if you offer young people more money per hour or offer them insurances and 401Ks and this, a lot of them just want that dollar per hour more. Um, and it's, it's hard to say, but that's just their train of thought when they're younger.
I, I, I actually, you know, I, like I said, I had talked to Woody about this, another approach that we could use and that's what a guy out there and that's what they're thinking they're gonna get. Especially his right-hand man there wondering when this is, is gonna happen, so. I'm bringing it up tonight.
It's been on delays.
We can keep checking the can down the road, but they're not getting anything in their pocket.
You know, even after, let's say a year goes by and we find that he really did nothing to do anything, we can always look at salary again if we have to. In fact, we're gonna be looking at salary again, so I, I.
We're not looking at it again. We're doing one or the other.
No, no, but.
We're not looking at it if we're doing that.
No, I agree, I agree, but I'm saying, I'm saying.
A year down the road.
This, this, this is a cost-saving measure to the town, cause we're not paying extra social security, we're not paying other type of retirement and all that kinda stuff and, and Medicaid. Medicare, excuse me, Medicare. And so it saves the town dollars and we give more money to the, to the, basically the individual without incurring an extra expense to the town. I think, Bob, I, I have to salute that. I never would have thought of this, cause a stipend sounds so much better because it's all cash in their pocket without having to pay uh, all the incidentals that go along with that. So I think it's a good idea, the way he's handling it. Cause you add it to the payroll, I think is there's, there's those hidden costs. You gotta pay social security, you gotta pay Medicare. I think it's we, this avoids it and it's a creative way of avoiding it.
But it's an incentive to give work more hours too.
Right, the thing is, they're gonna wanna, wanna work. I, I'm gonna, hey Woody, can I have a few extra hours? I wanna, I'm gonna, I'm right on the edge. Can you give me a few extra hours? Hey, that's what I wanna, I wanna hear that instead of, instead of having me, how, can I have off? How about giving me a few extra hours so I can make a stipend?
And, you know, it's an encouragement for them to do that, or you could do like Jeff did, cause Jeff was creative. And you give Pete a stipend for the problem, correct?
Yeah.
And then you go back, you know?
And the thing is, I don't think.
Only thing is, Pete's stipend is taxable. This one isn't.
Yeah.
Pete's on call all winter.
I, I, but my point is, this isn't taxable. The other one. I, but my point is, this isn't taxable, the other one is.
You know, we've done, we've done things, I've seen things done for the transfer station. We've tried hiring bonuses at one time, and that worked a while, and that created all sorts of disruption down there. But some people got them, and some people didn't, existing employees didn't get them, they created a hassle. I mean, that worked for a little while, but then we realized, no matter what you give, there's always gonna be turnover. But I'd say this is, we have frontline employees, we have other departments which are doing creative things. I said, I think this is a creative thing to do for our employees, and I, I support it, Bob. I, I think it's a good idea.
I support it, I'm just still not sure about the way. I think that, I think we should try it for a year and revisit it in that year.
And you can add a few more.
And then whether we do it as part of their dollars, or we keep going this route, we have time to review and know what it's gonna take.
Because that doesn't eliminate if you do a wage increase next year, which I gotta tell you, don't go looking at the Department of Labor, because it's in the minus right now.
I am gonna look at that, because I think we were too generous this year. One thing I will tell you, is I never heard so many people ask for money right after they got a three percent raise. And that really bugged me, because I think here we are doing the best we can, you know, bringing these up. And then everybody asks for money right after, and I'll tell you, I was never so, I couldn't, I could never even think, found them asking for a raise after I got three percent.
But you know what, there's some that did appreciate it, so, you know, that's all I have to look at, is...
You don't need to come and say that.
A lot of people told me that, you know, some people told me it wasn't enough, but we had some people that appreciated it, so... You know, with that, I, you know, I saw so many point eight increases that weren't much money going through a time, so that, you know, three percent may sound like a lot, but it was within the average.
For a forty-hour week, let's set a dollar value on Woody's rate now, because I don't think he should be the same as the other hour, other employees.
He would, maybe not stratification, he's...
One twenty-five or one fifty for a forty-hour week?
One twenty-five.
Right, so that could be incorporated in there, we could do that.
You wanna just jot it down so Leo, I would think you're gonna leave that one there, right?
Okay, so what I'll do, I'll just put it on the bottom.
Right.
Forty hours.
One point last, good.
And then we'll have to address that situation at the same time.
So, I think, Bob, let's do, for a year's period of time, and just review how it's working, and decide if we wanna go to an hourly, or leave it at this. I just wanna see how it works for Woody, Lean, the government doing the payroll, our auditing, all of that.
I'll tell you that the companies that I work with, they gave travel allowance. The guys were happy to get the travel allowance.
So, Bob made a motion, we had some discussion, Michael second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you, Bob.
And that's retroactive to April first.
I won't type it out formally and ask the board to sign it at one point, yeah, so...
Do you want to slide it?
Would you please?
Yeah.
Okay, that all you had, Bob, or you had no more?
That's all, that's, we did the snakes. That was that, we did the other thing, and you took care of the recycling center.
I tell you, I've got five things written down, you got them all.
Got them all, okay, good. It's a wrap, can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
At nine eighteen?
However, I'd like to keep the board in abey and spend another five...